Spirit of community, spirit of justice. Thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our city. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with charity and restraint. Give us a spirit of service. Remind us that we are stewards of your authority. Guide us to be leaders of your people. Help us to see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us and treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence your creation deserves. We act as your sons and daughters, confident in your goodness and love. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge to our nation's love. I pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit.
In the space of America, into the republic which stands in our nation and in our land, indivisible, and every being touched across.
Thank you Pastor Wardley. We do have one proclamation. I'm sorry, may we have the roll call please?
Mayor Ames.
Here.
Mayor Protim Felshaw.
Present.
Councilmember Gibbs.
Present.
Councilmember Neal.
Present.
Councilmember Page.
Here.
Councilmember Samuel.
Present.
Thank you. We do have one proclamation today that I would like to deliver on Pray Beaumont Day and welcome Pastor Cameron. We appreciate you being here today and Pastor Benwell and others. Whereas Sunday, September 27th, 2020 is the day that has been set aside as Pray Beaumont Day to pray for the spiritual and natural prosperity and well-being of our city. And whereas in conjunction with Pray Beaumont Day and the Pray Beaumont Day Prayer Drive, all houses of worship are encouraged to take time doing their prayer service to offer support for the recovery from COVID-19, the recent storms, and protection from future disasters to our city. And whereas every church in the city is being asked to set aside a time this coming Sunday morning to pray for our city, its leaders, churches, schools, et cetera. And whereas the power of prayer from church congregations can affect changes that can be manifested through spirit-led unified prayer and lead to a more compassionate, involved, and happier community. And whereas in conjunction with Pray Beaumont Day, churches from around the city will join together in a prayer drive encircling the city with prayer. And now therefore I, Becky Ames, Mayor of the City of Beaumont, commend the clergy of our city for their loving and caring efforts to pray for our city and its people and do hereby proclaim Sunday, September 27th, 2020, as Pray Beaumont Day in Beaumont and ask all the citizens of Beaumont to encourage this effort to pray for a betterment of our city and its communities. Accordingly, I have set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Beaumont to be affixed, signed today, September 22nd, 2020. And accepting today is Pastor Howard Cameron, who organizes Pray Beaumont Day. And please have all the other pastors come with you and say hi to us and accept your proclamation Pastor and feel free to say a few words.
Thank you very much. It's a delight to be here, please.
Would you like to take this first?
Yes, of course.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We appreciate you.
Well done.
It's very fitting that with everything going on in our city over the last few months that y'all are here today and we appreciate it very much.
Saying it is an extreme honor to be receiving this on behalf of the churches in our community is an understatement, to say the least. And to express my gratitude with words does not do it enough because of your belief and supports in us. With that said, thank you from the bottom of our hearts, my heart, our church Trinity Church and the surrounding churches in this area who recognize this city is established on the foundation that God is who he says he is and he will do what he says he wants to do. So thank you so much and again, we do not take this lightly.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you.
We'd like to extend an invitation to you and all the other city council members to come ride with us on Sunday. We gather at Ford Park at 3:00 and we leave on the bus at 3:30. The pastors ride on the bus, we pray together, we travel a 40-mile route around our city. You really need to be there Pastor Felshaw. We have a police escort. They've been good enough to, they escort us every year. It's always been a good, safe, quick, it's an hour and a half drive from start to finish. We end up where we started, but we cover all the limits of the city and pray over every aspect that we've been able to come up with that needs prayer. And then we throw in a few more when we have storms and other things facing in our direction. So it's been, it's been, this is our 17th year. This is not something new, but it's ongoing and I feel like, and as long as we have a council and mayor that supports us like this one does, we will continue to do this. Thank you very much.
Thank you Pastor.
Come on. Pastor Benwell.
I had a desire to show you how calculus my knees are as we pray for each of you. Just witnessing you present today give us assurance that our prayers go beyond the ceiling. So keep the good work up and we will continue to pray. Bless you.
Thank you Pastor. Thank y'all so much for everything you do. Okay, that concludes our proclamations for today. If you're here for that purpose and you need to leave, now would be the time to do so, but of course you're always more than welcome to stay. Now would be the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. If you would like to make public comment on scheduled agenda items 1 through 4, 6 through 9, or the consent agenda, the time to do so is now. That's items 1 through 4, 6 through 9, or the consent agenda. Item number 5 has already been heard in a joint public hearing, so it's not available for comment. If you would like to speak in one of these items and you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip and hand it to the officer. We will call out your name, we will escort you into chambers. We would appreciate if you keep your comments to three minutes. The green light will come on when you approach the podium and the red light will come on when your time is up. If you're here to speak on any other item, I will open up the microphone at the end of our general business for that purpose, but right now it's 1 through 4, or 6 through 9, or the consent agenda.
Troy Marsall, 3007 Carroll-Hawn Street, Houston, Texas, item number 6.
He's not here?
Yeah, he didn't want to speak.
Oh, no speak, okay. Is there any other citizens who wish to speak on one of these items?
That's all that I have here.
Okay. With that said then, council, I will entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? There seeming to be none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. First item, please.
Mayor and council, item number 1 is an ordinance entitled, an ordinance referred to as the annual appropriation ordinance, adopting a budget for the fiscal period beginning October the 1st, 2020 and ending September the 30th, 2021, in accordance with the charter of the City of Beaumont, apportioning the funds of the City of Beaumont, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and providing for severability. Article 6, Section 8 of the City Charter states that the budget shall be adopted by the favorable votes of at least a majority of all members of the council. The Texas government code requires the vote to adopt a budget to be a record vote. The budget was submitted to council on August the 11th and reviewed during a work session on September the 8th. A public hearing was held on September the 15th, which met the requirements of the charter and state law. I would like to thank our department directors, our division managers, and especially Todd Semino, our CFO, Kristin Ferguson, our controller, Yvonne Aranda, who's our budget officer, and Victoria Sleds, our fiscal assistant. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you. Council, you've heard the reading of number 1. Can I get a motion on this item, please?
Motion approved.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? There seeming to be none. We need to take a record vote, please.
Mayor Ames.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Felshaw.
Yes.
Councilmember Gibbs.
Yes.
Councilmember Neal.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Samuel.
Yes.
And Councilmember Muthon.
Yes. Thank you. The motion carries unanimously. Next item, please.
Item number 2 is to consider resolution adopting the 2021 capital program. The capital program was originally submitted to council on May the 15th, 2020. It was submitted to council again on August the 11th with the budget and reviewed during a work session on September the 8th. A public hearing was also held on September the 15th. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you, council. You've heard the reading of number 2. Is there a motion on this item, please?
So moved.
There's a motion and a second for approval. Is there any discussion? Seeming to be none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
It needs a record vote, too?
I didn't get the second, I'm sorry.
Who made the second?
Yes.
I think it was Councilman Page.
No record vote required on that.
Right, okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Item number 3, please.
Mayor and council, item number 3 is an ordinance entitled, an ordinance, accepting the tax rule for the City of Beaumont, establishing a tax rate, providing for levying, assessing and collecting of abhorrent taxes for the tax year 2020, fiscal year 2021, providing for severability and providing for repeal. The Jefferson Central Appraisal District submitted the certified tax rule on July the 22nd in the amount of $7,883,980,459. And based on this taxable value, a property tax rate of 71 cents per $100 valuation for the tax year 2020 is proposed, which is the current rate. The tax rate would be apportioned 0.506837 per $100 of assessed valuation to the general fund and 0.203163 per $100 of assessed valuation to the debt service fund. As required by the tax code, the tax rate consists of those two components that I just mentioned, each of which must be approved separately by record vote and at least 60% of the governing body must vote in favor of the ordinance. So the administration recommends that you actually have three separate votes and I'll walk you through them. The first vote, and these are all record votes, the first vote is where you would vote to say the tax rate would be apportioned 0.506837 per $100 of assessed valuation to the general fund. That's the first vote.
Okay, thank you. Want to do those separately then?
Yes ma'am.
Okay. So council, is there a motion on this first section of this item?
So moved.
There's a motion on the floor for approval? Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Call for a record vote, please.
Mayor Ames.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Felshaw.
Yes.
Councilmember Gibbs.
Yes.
Councilmember Neal.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Samuel.
Yes.
And Councilmember Muthon.
Yes. Thank you. The motion carries unanimously. Next section, please.
Okay, the second vote is that the tax rate would be apportioned 0.203163 per $100 of assessed valuation to the debt service fund.
Thank you, council. Is there a motion on the second section of this item?
So moved.
There's a motion for approval? Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Appearing to be none. Calling for a record vote, please.
Mayor Ames.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Felshaw.
Yes.
Councilmember Gibbs.
Yes.
Councilmember Neal.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Samuel.
Yes.
And Councilmember Muthon.
Yes. Thank you. The motion carries unanimously as well. Next one, please.
The third vote, someone would need to read this.
Okay.
So I'll read it for the public's benefit.
Thank you.
This council is required to actually read this statement. It says, "Someone, that I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 0.71 per $100, which is effectively a 2.8% increase in the tax rate."
Thank you. Council, is there, would someone like to make this motion, please?
I so move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of the tax rate of 0.71 per $100 valuation, which is effectively a 2.8% increase in the tax rate.
Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? There appearing to be none. May we have a record vote, please?
Mayor Ames.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Felshaw.
Yes.
Councilmember Gibbs.
Yes.
Councilmember Neal.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Samuel.
Yes.
And Councilmember Muthon.
Yes. Thank you. The motion also carries unanimously. Item number 4, please.
Mayor and council, item number 4 is an ordinance entitled, an ordinance, ratifying the budgeted property tax increase reflected in the fiscal year 2021 budget. The local government code includes the following language. Adoption of a budget that will require raising more revenue from property taxes than in the previous year requires a separate vote of the governing body to ratify the property tax increase reflected in the budget. Again, the current tax rate of 71 cents per $100 of assessed value will remain at 71 cents. The budgeted revenue from property taxes is expected to be $1,460,000 more than fiscal year 2020. Of this amount, $549,767 is attributable to new property added to the tax rule this year. The administration recommends approval by record vote.
Thank you. Council, you have heard the reading of item number 4. Is there a motion on this item, please?
So moved.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll second.
A motion by Councilman Neal, second by Mayor Protim. Okay, there's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Councilman Gibbs.
Mr. Manager, you say that $549,767 is attributable to new property added to the tax rule this year. Is it fair then to conclude that the balance of the additional amount is because of increased appraisals in the property?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on item number 4? Call for a record vote, please.
Mayor Ames.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Felshaw.
Yes.
Councilmember Gibbs.
Yes.
Councilmember Neal.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Samuel.
Yes.
And Councilmember Muthon.
Yes. Thank you. This motion also carries unanimously. Item number 5, please.
Mayor and council, item number 5 is an ordinance entitled, an ordinance, granting a specific use permit to allow a gaming facility in a GCMD, General Commercial Multiple Family Dwelling District located at 4705 Magnolia Avenue, City of Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. The applicant wishes to have 50 gaming machines at this location. The hours of operation for the business would be from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. A joint public hearing held on September the 9th, the planning commission recommended 9 to 0 to deny the request for a specific use permit. The administration recommends denial as well.
Thank you, council. You have heard the reading of item number 6. Is there a motion on this item?
I so move.
Second.
I so move for denial.
Thank you. Is that second apply?
Second apply.
Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion? There's no discussion? All in favor of the motion for denial? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. The item is denied. Number 7, please.
Mayor and council, the next item is to consider resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an earnest money contract and other related documents for the sale of city-owned property located at 3455 Sarah Street. Wheeler Commercial has secured a potential buyer who is interested in purchasing city-owned property, which is the former Melton YMCA location. The earnest money contract is with Troy Marsall, who's the owner of Onsite Counseling. There's a cash offer in the amount of $325,000. Mr. Marsall would deposit $3,000 as earnest money to Texas Regional Title for feasibility period of 30 days. The date of closing would be 30 days after the expiration of the feasibility period. And we would like to thank Lee Wheeler and Antoinette Hardy for their continued good work. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you, council. You have heard the reading of item number 6. Is there a motion on this item?
So moved for approval.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor for approval? Is there any discussion? Councilman Gibbs.
Is Mr. Marsall here today?
We've never met. He is there. He just raised his hand.
Mr. Marsall, could you come forward? I'd like to ask you a question or two. Good afternoon, Mr. Marsall. Can you tell me, what are your plans to do with this property once you're acquired?
Yes, turn into a healthcare facility with several disciplines of medicine.
Okay. That sounds admirable. What are your plans with regard to the current tenant that is there?
Well, she provides healthcare services currently and so she could continue to coexist with what we are doing.
Okay. Have you talked to Dr. Farrell, who is the current tenant in the building? Have y'all met or visited?
Once, yes.
Okay. You understand that at the present time, she has a long-term lease for the use of that facility that may preclude you from doing anything inside the building. Is that correct? Do you understand that?
No, I don't.
That hasn't been explained to you?
The lease that I've read, that I was given, showed where she does have a lease up until 2033, but the building is 26,000 square feet. So I don't understand how she would occupy 26,000 square feet with her small business.
My understanding of the lease is that she has the right to utilize that entire facility. Has that not been explained to you?
According to the lease, it doesn't specify that she has 26,000 square feet. It does, it does say that she has rental space in the lease, but it's not specific to 26,000 square feet for $1,000 per month.
Okay. If she does in fact have the use of the entire facility, would that impact on your decision to buy this building if she has the ability to use that entire facility up until 2033?
Of course it would.
Okay. You also understand that as landlord, you would be responsible for taking care of any air conditioning needs or improvements that go along with that building? Is that right?
That's correct.
And that would include the space that she occupies, not any space that you might intend to occupy, but you'd have to take care of any maintenance needs or anything that the current contract calls for as well?
Yeah, yes, I understand that.
Are you, is that all?
That's, that's all I have.
Okay, so is there anyone else that has a question or from Mr., is it, is it?
Marsall.
Marsall?
Marsall.
If, if not, I'll let him sit down and we can discuss it.
I do.
You do? Okay, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Mr. Marsall, so you've stated that you're not aware of the contract and the stipulations of it.
No, I have the contract.
You have the contract?
Yes.
But your understanding is that she does not have full use or capacity of the entire building, correct?
Well, according to, to the young lady that I met with, she wouldn't need 26,000 square feet to operate a business where there's only three or four employees. I have 88 employees and I couldn't use 26,000 square feet.
Okay. Well, I'm going to ask the city man, the city attorney to come up and make a clarification, but before I do that, I have a question that I would like to ask of you.
Sure.
I am the ward counsel for ward 4, for that area in which the building reside, and I would like to ask of you. Item number 3 of the lease agreement states that the premises may be used for providing private educational services, recreational, educational, social, and civic activities for the general public. Would you be willing, as a stipulation, to allow the general public to use the facility?
I'm in full agreement with that.
You're in full agreement with it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. I would like to ask the city attorney if he would come forth and clarify the square footage of which the agreement in the building consists of her lease. Because you're saying that you don't feel that she has use of all of the square footage is what I'm understanding.
Well, I'm only going by the contract.
Yep.
And so the contract doesn't state that she has 26,000 square feet of usage. It doesn't state that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, sir. We appreciate it so much. Don't mean to put you on the spot. We appreciate you. Thank you. And I think that we discussed this in executive session. If you'd like to reiterate, please, city attorney.
Well, the lease does not specify the premises in terms of square footage. The description is given as a block in a subdivision, 10-acre tract and facility, so it doesn't speak to square footage.
So that being said, as we talked about, she does, if Mr.
And the lease carries, if it, when the city sells the property, the lease goes to the new owner and it will be up to the new owner to enforce the lease as.
Or to negotiate another lease.
Yes.
Whatever his desire is. Is that right?
Whatever the lease allows for.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead.
Okay. So I have concerns because what this seems to be doing is to be inviting litigation, which is almost certainly going to ensue between the current tenant and the new landlord. I understand from the city's perspective, you know, we'll be out of it. You know, we'll, we'll no longer be dealing with this issue. And my responsibility is to the citizens of Beaumont. And in fulfilling that responsibility, in my opinion, it is better for the city to be out from under this building and the obligations of maintenance that go with it because it is extremely expensive. It's also desirable to put it on the tax rolls as opposed to it not generating tax revenue for us. However, I am conflicted because what is certain to happen here is that the new landlord is going to take the position that Dr. Farrell is only authorized to use a certain portion of the building and then he's going to do whatever he wants with the other part of the property, which may include opening it up to the general public. And we have had that. up to the general public. And we have had that issue brought before the council in the past, and why Dr. Farrell has indicated that that's a problem for the clientele that she serves, which are special needs kids that are very vulnerable and cannot have interaction with the public. So I'm conflicted. I know what's going to happen, but I do believe it is in the best interest of the city to get out from under that building. But it's, it's with a very, very heavy heart, and I'm, I'm very bothered by what I know is going to come down. That's all, mayor.
Councilmember Pay.
As I read what we just, we're looking at here, Troy, you've got 30 days to work something out. And as smart as I know you are, and I've never met you, but if you're doing, if you've got 88 employees, you're doing something right, you've got 30 days to sit down and visit with Dr. Farrell and work through all these details. And if it doesn't work out, you certainly have the option to walk away from. So we've got 30 days. And I think as smart as he is, and as smart as Dr. Farrell is, I pretty, I feel very confident that between the two of them, they'll work something out, and we can move forward. That'll be positive for our community. But the main thing I'm emphasizing is there's 30 days to sit down and visit. And if it doesn't work out, he's in a position to say, I don't want to do it, and walk away from it. And that's basically what we're voting on. You got, we're going to accept the earnest money, 30 days to work through it, and hopefully they will, and I have all the confidence in the world that they will. But I don't want anybody just tuning in to think that as soon as, that litigation is automatic, because it's not. We've got 30 days, and a lot of things can happen in 30 days. In this case, I think it'll be positive. That's it, mayor.
Councilmember Samuel.
Yes, mayor. At this point, I'm a bit perplexed somewhat. It appears Mr. Marsall has thoroughly gone over the contract, and he understands the contract as been presented to him. He's not been rushed into the contract. I'm assuming the other party has had an opportunity to voice her concerns with the contract. So with both of those assumptions being made, and the questions being posed by my colleague, I'm wondering, is there something else that you know, that you've been told, that we don't know?
Well, Councilmember Samuel, I have looked at the contract, just as you have, and the contract is vague, because it doesn't describe with particularity what the premises looks to be in terms of square footage.
Okay, now, I, I do understand your perception that that contract is vague, but my question is, is there additional information that's been given to you that we don't know about?
No.
Okay. I just wanted to be sure of that.
Thank you. Mr. Marsall, you had your hand up. Did you have something you wanted to say? I want to give you that opportunity, since there's been some, it's up to you completely.
Yeah, I, I just want to make this clear. I'm not coming to Beaumont to litigate with anyone. I come in the spirit of resolution, and I think that there are going to be individuals in the Beaumont area that are going to be hired on, that are maybe unemployed or want to change and go into different areas of work, and they can do so. And so I, I would have no issues with the young lady residing in the business. I mean, as a business person, she's paying rent. So I want to make money. I didn't come down here to throw away money by hiring lawyers to litigate with anyone. So I think that it would be in the best interest of the city, as well as the, the young lady, for us to come together and work it out. I mean, she's, she deals with special needs children, okay? I deal with children as well. They may not be special needs, but I have contracts with some of the major insurance companies to provide mental health care, or behavioral health care, I should say, for children as well. So I think it would be a great thing.
Thank you, mister.
Mayors, my mayor. Sir, I, I hope you can work out an arrangement with Dr. Farrell that is mutually convenient and beneficial to both of you. My concern is that, you know, what happens if, if, if you're not, and as Councilmember Pay said, that you have 30 days to try to work those agreements out. I urge you to take full value of that time to, to try to do that. As I said earlier, I do think it's in the best interest of the city to divorce ourselves from that building and put it back on the tax rolls. My concern, however, remains in the background about Dr. Farrell's clientele and her ability to be able to service them. I take you at your word that you're going to be able to work with her and try to work something out.
Yes, I will.
Try it.
Thank you.
Mr. Marsall, thank you so much. And I want, I just want you to know, welcome to Beaumont. We're glad you chose to come here. We welcome you. Thank you. Okay, so we had a motion and a second on this item, correct? Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Number seven, please.
Item number seven is to consider a resolution approving the write-off of uncollectible delinquent accounts. This request is in accordance with the write-off policy approved by the city council. The policy gives council the final authority to write off an individual account receivable identified as uncollectible when the balance due exceeds $1,000. If at any time an account becomes collectible after having been written off, the receivable shall be adjusted accordingly. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you. Counsel, you've heard the reading of item number seven. Is there a motion on this item?
So.
Thank you. Is, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Appearing to be none. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Next item, please.
Item number eight is an ordinance entitled in ordinance granting a franchise for solid waste collection and transportation services to Natus Management Services. Natus Management Services has requested that the city council grant them a franchise agreement. They manage construction and disposal services for clients locally with an office on Spinaltop Avenue. The proposed agreement provides for a term of one year from its effective date and a franchise fee of 7% of gross revenues received for service. According to the city charter, franchise ordinances require readings at three separate council meetings. This is the third reading today. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you, counsel. You have heard the reading of item number eight. Is there a motion on this item?
So move.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Number nine, please.
Item number nine is an ordinance entitled in ordinance of the city of Beaumont amending ordinance 20-031 to amend the public health emergency disaster orders for the city of Beaumont, allowing the opening of city facilities, providing for severability, providing for a penalty, and providing for repeal. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, certain city facilities, as you know, have been closed to the public since March. And at this time, the Lakeside Center, the downtown library across the street, Civic Center, Event Center, Julie Rogers Theater, Jefferson Theater, Sterling Pruitt Center, and our community centers are closed. This item was placed on the agenda at the request of Mayor Ames and Councilmember Neeld, so that the city council could consider reopening these facilities. And if the council so chooses today, the staff would recommend that we do so on Thursday, October the first.
Thank you. Counsel, you've heard the reading of number nine. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Before we move forward, I would just like to make a few comments about this. And Dr. Orfeen was planning to come to this meeting, but right before the meeting, he, he was not able to come. But I do want to make a few comments about it, and I have been talking to him periodically over the last few weeks. And as most of you are aware, I've, I've been opposed to opening the city facilities for the past few months, which I still think was the right decision, mostly due to the amount of, the reason I felt that way was mostly due to the amount of positive COVID cases versus recoveries, the ability of our local hospitals to care for the COVID patients and not be overrun, our hospitals not be overrun for non-COVID patients to get prompt care, along with the staffing and equipment capabilities of our local hospitals. That's all an information that were given to me by the medical professionals and also the hospitals. And basically begging us not to move forward with opening these, and this was over the last few months. However, I've recently reevaluated my position due to a few things. One is our local positive cases numbers and hospitalizations have been declining fairly rapidly. In addition, Governor Abbott's press conference last week on the 17th, he implemented the use of a data-driven hospitalization metrics used by physicians and medical experts to, to assist in guiding the state's ongoing efforts in reference to COVID-19, while expanding business services and, and business openings. I won't go into the details of that metrics, but it is available online under Governor Abbott's page. But our area is within these guidelines to move forward, and that, that played a huge, a huge, that meant a lot to me. But also, the main reason is because I look at the cases every day, and we've been steadily declining. But in addition to that, our recoveries have been higher than our new cases, which I think is important. I do want to reiterate, though, and I, I've made some notes, so if you watch, I'm looking, because I don't want to forget anything, because this is still very, very important to me, and I think it's imperative to our city and the health of our city, that I want to reiterate that we must and we have to proceed with caution, because we don't want to go backwards. We need to maintain our health while moving our city forward. A significant decline in COVID-19 cases is not a sign to let up vigilance against the virus, and that it's even more important now that we embrace the guidance of our medical professionals, our physicians, and those who treat these patients by wearing a face covering, that I did have on, I had to talk, social distancing, and practicing proper sanitation procedures. If we go backwards, I'll be the first one to raise my hand and say, we need to take drastic measures to change this position. I'm not saying this is over. I don't think by far it's over. I believe that we'll be going into next year with this. But if we continue to do what most of our citizens have been doing by social distancing and wearing masks, I think that we will continue to be on the right road. But again, I just want to let everyone know and the council know that this is not the end of it if our cases race up. As I mentioned before, Dr. Orfeen had planned to come, but I had a conversation with him, and we've been talking regularly. And he also states that he is, and I'll give any of you his number if you want to call him. He said that was okay. But this is what he says, that our positive cases and hospitalizations have gone down significantly, and he is taking care of those patients. It's in, it's below 30 in both hospitals, and that's ICU and the general hospital population, and it has been for a couple of weeks now, which is an unbelievably good sign for us. But again, we have to take this seriously and not go backwards. Dr. Orfeen agrees, and he stated to me that we have to move forward cautiously, because we don't want to go backwards. He said, this, what he said to me, and I said, what do you think going backwards would mean? And he said that if both of our hospitals get up to 75 patients, both in ICU and in their general populations, and that means St. Elizabeth and Baptist, which are the two that serve the city of Beaumont, due to COVID, again, we will need to take drastic measures to bring the numbers back down. And I agree with him. Some of you may read and, may have read in the media that Harden County is seeing an increase in their cases. And as we know, many of the Harden County residents come to our area to shop and to do different things. And so that is, that does present a little bit of concern. But I think if we continue to do what we've been doing, social distancing, as we've done in here, wearing masks, then we will be fine, because at some point, we do need to move the city forward. And that's my stance on it. And I just wanted to explain it, because I've been a strong, strong proponent to keep the buildings closed. But I do think, based on what's happening in our city as far as cases, what I'm hearing from the medical professionals, and the guidelines that the governor has put in place recently, the most recent guidelines, I should say, do play a strong role in that. With that said, counsel, I'll open it up for any questions or concerns or comments. But I did want our city attorney to speak with us, because I think there is some confusion on, on the governor's order, which in a lot of cases, there have been. I, for one, believe that you should wear a mask anytime you're inside a public building, unless you can social distance. And I know some of you don't agree with me on that. I, I feel very strongly about that, unless you're trying to talk and make a speech, because I'm getting ready to put this back on. But there are some areas that might be misconstrued. If they're not addressed in the newest order, then they stay the same as the previous order, is how I understand it. So if you would, city attorney, would you please bring us up to date? I know the restaurants were able to open at 75%, but that doesn't necessarily mean it's every public venue, correct?
That's correct, mayor. The governor on last Friday issued new executive orders, increasing numbers and specifying categories for the increase of those numbers. And, and the order does not speak to every category of entity or business. Specifically, it does not speak to the types of, specifically to the types of venues that we have here in the city of Beaumont. But at the same time, his order gives guidance, or gets guidance from, and, and the Texas Department of State Health Services gives guidance to his executive orders. And the TDSHS provides categories that would impact the city of Beaumont venues and, and types of buildings, specifically wedding venues, wedding reception venues, which our event center would be considered to be, museums and libraries, movie theaters, fine arts performance halls, which the Julie Rogers would be, and it speaks as to the halls as well as to the patrons. And it also gives guidance to Texans who are over the age of 65, which would impact our Lakeside Center. All of those venues are limited to 50% of their total listed occupancy, with the exception of museums. And museums are at 75%. So that's where we are. We're at 50%. And, and the guidelines do specifically speak to being informed and taking action based upon common sense and wise judgment that protects the health and safety of those folks who would enter into our venues. It does not speak specifically to community centers, which allows us to use that wise judgment and common sense in terms of how we would use those facilities for our citizens. So there is discretion given. And we, I've spoken with the manager and Emily Wheeler, who operates these facilities, and I think we're all on the, the same page that we would move forward in the event council so chooses, in protecting the citizens who would use our facilities. in the event council so chooses in protecting the citizens who would use our facilities.
Okay. So the Best Year Center, are we looking at, I mean, was that, would that be at 50% too, even though it serves an elderly population?
Well, it depends on how you look at it, mayor. You know, there, we do have workout equipment in there and the governor's order speaks to gyms and gym facilities. I don't know that you'd want to look at that facility as a gym or a gym facility. But at the same time, he speaks to guidance for Texans over 65 years of age and that population for that center is that critical population and they advise if you're that age, stay home if possible. So I would think we wouldn't want to do more than 50% in that building.
Agreed, okay. And that would be up to the citizen who wants to come now and of course, the Best Year Center, although it does serve that population, anyone, any age can go to it.
Right, right.
So, okay, any questions of the, the city attorney?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Attorney, what are your thoughts on opening council chambers back up to citizens?
Well, the governor's order continue to speak to groups of 10 or less and it would address, you know, a gathering such as this, 10 or less. Again, maintaining social distancing and wearing a face covering because it would be a, you know, a public place. Again, that's up to the council. The governor has relaxed our open meetings regulations to the point where we can meet as we have been, social distance limiting the number.
I wouldn't think a packed council chambers would be in our best interest for anyone. I don't, I mean, we're pretty full right now. We've got some space over here, but for the most part, I think we're just trying to keep people apart. And even in our venues that we are starting to open, whether it be the event center or wherever, it does speak to social distancing and in the Julie Rogers, there has to be chairs in between and that kind of thing. I would only be interested in doing that if we could keep the distancing and as I see right here, this side looks pretty good. This side's got a little bit, maybe about four more people is about all we could take and still stay in those guidelines. So up to y'all, but that's not on our agenda. Is that, did you have something for the city attorney?
No, no.
Does anybody else have anything for this? Go ahead, please.
I do.
No, not for the, okay. Thank, thank you so much. Go ahead, please.
So I stuck my head in the conference room and I think there were two people that were in there right before the council meeting that might want to speak to council, I don't know. But I would be favorably inclined to allow on a first come, first served basis, maybe the first four or five citizens that want to sit in here and observe, provided that we don't have any more than we have here right now, to allow that to happen. I am mindful of what you're saying though about continuing to need to be able to spread out and if for some reason we had a lot of people, I guess, if you're not part of that first four or five people, they would have to be in the conference room, but some people strongly feel like they want to be here and, you know, I think we've all seen emails from some citizens.
Yes, one in particular, yes. Okay, so that's not on our agenda today. I don't think this, that can be attached to this, or is it?
It's not a closed facility.
So it would not be, we'd have to bring that up separately?
I would think so.
Yeah, I believe so too. Okay, I'm just making sure, is there any council member, Samuel?
Yes, ma'am. I'll simply state that I appreciate the freedoms and rights that come along with being residents of America and we have a freedom of choice. Some people look to and value the healthcare professionals, some look at the adverse impact that will have on economics, some listen to the healthcare professionals as far as being the source or the value. My anticipation was that we hear from healthcare professionals, but regardless of whether they're here or not, everybody has, that's here, have been going through the pandemic since the beginning and we all have some common sense and I think that's what has to be used with everyone else that has the opportunity, whether they're going to participate in the functions and utilize the facilities. However, my decision will be based on just my living and I don't trust what everybody says. I could care less about those who have ulterior motives. This is not a necessity. I believe that had we done what we should have done in the beginning of this pandemic, we would be much further ahead by now. We did not and we are where we are. And whatever we do today, two months from now, three months from now, six months from now, we'll be able to look back at today and said, either we made a good decision or it was not. I realize that there's not as much testing going on now that has been in, in the past. And yes, I do understand that the hospital occupancy has changed, but I do realize that now we're opening schools, we're seeing young children contracting the virus and dying. I also know that with the additional opening of facilities means more people will contract. So I will simply say it's up to each individual council member to make their own decision and that's good. I choose to err on the side of caution and that's why I'll be voting against it. But I just hope and pray that the residents of our city will not be lulled into a false sense of security and thinking everything is okay, thinking that they can go back to life as it was before. There's a lot of people out there that will not have the wherewithal to make those decisions. There are some young people that have no idea of what they're doing. It will be up to parents, grandparents, guardians to make sure that they are safe. So with that, council brings it back, it's ours to make our own individual choices. And so with that, I just want everybody to know that I choose life and health over dollars and economics.
Thank you. You had something? Okay.
Thank you, mayor. Earlier today on CNN, the United States hit the 200 mark as a matter of fact. When I left home today, it was 205,000 Americans that have died. I have a, I have friends, that's a mother and a daughter, that did everything they could have possibly done to not get COVID. They didn't even go to the family dinners on Sunday and both wind up with COVID being as cautious as they could possibly be. And I'm saying that because they did everything within their power and their right to not get COVID. But you don't only wear this to protect yourself, you wear it to protect others. So when someone says, I don't want to wear it, I'm not wearing it, I have a right not to. It's my constitutional right not to, and which it is your constitutional right. But then when a disease like COVID infringes on the freedom of other people because you choose not to wear a mask, then it affect me or the other person? And when you look at 205,000 people where wars did not even kill that many people and to open up facilities that is not life or death or, they're community facilities and there are facilities that taxpayers pay for, but if you're not alive to even enjoy them, then the responsibility comes upon us. So that's all I have to say, mayor.
I understand. And please, I agree with both you and Councilman Samuel in every way that you said, I just think it's, at some point, we have to look at moving the city forward. There's a lot of people who want to do that, there's a lot of people who don't, but I want, I want to reiterate again, if we see the numbers rising, I may be the first one to say, we need to go backwards and council might disagree with me, but I'm just stating that that is just, that's a big deal for me and speaking with the physicians that are actually taking care of the COVID patients and actually are putting their hands on those patients, saying to me, I think it's a safe time to do this, but we have to proceed with caution. Caution is when you go somewhere, even if you can social distance unless you're outside, that you wear a mask. Every person in Texas shall wear a face covering over the nose and mouth when inside a commercial entity or other building or space open to the public. Or when in an outdoor public space, wherever it is not feasible to maintain six feet of social distancing from another person not in the same household. That is in the governor's order. Or, key word, every person in Texas shall wear a face covering over the nose and mouth when inside a commercial entity or building or space open to the public. Or when outside, when social distancing is not feasible. It's pretty clear to me and I'm reading this because of some of the things that Councilmember Muton said, I would feel much more comfortable with this if all of our citizens, when they do go to our facilities, would wear a mask and not give the staff or caterers or anyone else a hard time when they ask them to do so. I spoke with Leslie French, who is the general counsel for the Office of the Attorney General for the state of Texas, called the governor's office and she is the person that I was given to speak to and she did tell me that was the intent. However, people have their rights. So with that said, I hope that as we move forward and there's been a lot of people on council and there's a lot of people out there in our community that have urged us to please move forward, I'm willing to do that, but I'm willing to do that under certain stipulations and those stipulations are that we wear masks and that we social distance. And if our hospital numbers get higher, then we're going to pull it back. I'm going to do everything I can to make sure that happens if it does. So I'm not taking this lightly. I also choose life, but I also know that there are other people that feel differently and right now I think they might be a majority, but we'll see. So with that said, I believe if anyone, no one has anything else, I'm going to call for a vote on this item. We do have a motion and a second, all in favor?
I'd like, I'd like to say something, please, if I may. Today we're looking at things based on a lot of information and science is the key and we need to know that people under 44 have like a 2% mortality with COVID. The people that are over 65 or have some underlying condition are really in bad shape as it relates to COVID. It can have an adverse effect to them. When you go back and look at most of the numbers, and I'm talking about close to half of all the numbers of people that have passed away have been in nursing homes and a whole lot of that was in New York City, not Beaumont, Texas. And so when we're looking at it, New York's a lot different from Beaumont and Robin made a good point, you know, you can do a lot of things and still get sick. I mean, there may, you know, we tell everybody, you know, get yourself checked, you might, you could have cancer, breast cancer, we talk about that, there may be people here that haven't checked that do have cancer. You don't know it yet because you haven't checked it. That's why we encourage you through the Gift of Life program and all the other ones to check and make sure. So there's a lot of things that happen to people for a lot of reasons. We all, those of us believe in God, we can't ask him why because we don't know why a lot of this stuff happens and a lot of it's sad. And you see somebody that has lung cancer that never smoked a cigarette in their life and they die. I can't explain that, but things do happen. But when we try to be as conscious as we can about the reality of life and the only thing certain, as Benjamin Franklin said, is death and taxes. And when we're born, we know we're going to die sometime. We don't, we hope it's when we want it, but it's not. You know, God's going to decide that. So I think if we, if we look at this, this isn't about dollars and cents and life, that's not the choice. This is about making an educated decision based on facts. And my heart, I'll say it again, the first Martin, the first person to die of COVID-19 was a personal friend of mine. I'll say it over and over again, I take this personally. It doesn't have anything to do with business. It doesn't affect me as far as what I do. I don't need to open up to do anything, but we do have to think, we've got to see the big picture and not just focus on all the negatives, because there are negatives. But we need to think, what's the best thing we can do? Every single person up here should be doing that for all the citizens. If you're over 65 and you have underlying conditions, you, you have got to be careful. When people tell you, and if you're not, then sad things can happen. But this isn't about dollars and cents to me. It's about making a decision based on what, what do the numbers say, and we've talked about this, that we can do, what can we do to be as safe as possible? There is no guarantee that any of us walking out of here today is going to live till tomorrow. None. And I've got a pastor right there, I know will tell you the same thing and he tells his congregation, folks, you treat people like you want to be treated every single day because you don't know that you'll be here tomorrow to do it. And that's the way we've got to look at this. There's going to be some things that are happening, but we have no control over that. I can't, I don't understand people driving a motorcycle without a helmet, but that's their choice, but I'm not going to do it. And we've got to ask people to be responsible. We trust when we're driving 70 miles an hour on a two-lane highway that the person on the other side of the road isn't going to change lanes and we're passing each other with this much distance. We trust people to some degree and we have to. But that's what this decision is as it relates to the citizens of Beaumont. What's the reasonable thing to do with the information that we have to move forward? We all hate that COVID's here, but we can't make it go away, but we can do everything we can to try to be as safe as possible. And, and that's the way I'm looking at it. It doesn't have anything to do with money. Thank you.
And wear a mask.
Ma'am, I too look at the big picture. It's personal to me too. I have two classmates that died as a result of COVID, but the facts say over half of those that died were people of color. We don't know what God has, what his intent is, no. I, I agree, but we can look at the facts as they are and know that there are issues, there are problems. The facts as they are and know that there are issues, there are problems.
Are you done, Councilman? If not, go ahead, I'm just asking, can't tell.
I'm done.
I have another statement, Mayor.
Go ahead, please.
Councilmember Pay stated that. You know, you're, you could be standing next to someone that has cancer. You're not going to catch cancer by being in a room with a room full of people that have cancer. The other point that was stated about the responsibility. Well, that's the whole problem, because a lot of people aren't taking the responsibility of wearing masks. And they're going into public places. And it's going to be a vote here in a minute, and everyone is going to vote their conscience and what they feel. And everyone have a right to vote that way. But the other point of it is, is that there's no one to enforce the wearing of masks. We've seen it in here. It hasn't happened. It doesn't happen in most places. So then when you talk about having facilities at fifty percent or seventy-five percent. And the governor has stated to wear a mask, and people still do not honor or abide by the request. Then innocent people are at the mercy of other people's rights and attitudes. Thank you.
One thing, Mayor, if I may. I'm well aware that you can't catch cancer. I'm well aware of that. And.
Well, that's what you said.
No, I said, we don't know what can happen to all of us. That was my point. I mean, there may be somebody with cancer here that doesn't even know they got it. There are things that happen that we can't control as human beings. People drive down the street, get in an accident, and you go, golly, I just talked to him yesterday. We don't know what's going to happen. And we can't control everything. That's my point. We just have to. Be diligent and try to be as safe as we possibly can. And make decisions based on what we think is best for the community. And there's, whether it's a right or wrong decision, I don't, I'm not saying it is. I'm saying there's a difference of opinion, but there always is in life. So that's it.
I wasn't going to say anything, but Councilman, with all due respect, you're sitting beside me, and you don't know if you have COVID or not.
As a matter of fact, I just took a test today, and I'm glad you said that, because I'm negative.
Okay, good.
But I'm glad you said it.
I think that everyone in here should be wearing their mask, I'm sorry.
We're six feet apart, that's social distancing. But I don't want to.
But you might walk behind me, I'm just saying.
I'm just saying, I got tested for COVID this morning, and I'm negative.
Mayor, I call the question.
Sorry?
You brought it up, Mayor.
What's your question?
I call the question.
To vote.
To vote.
I tried to do that earlier before the council member wanted to talk, excuse me, if I give him the opportunity, I'm going to take it myself as well. If that's all right with you, because you would not have done that for me, but go ahead. I don't want to get into this, but I feel so strong about sitting up here and asking our citizens to wear masks because we're open in these facilities, but we don't do it ourselves. I wasn't going to say anything, I can't help it. It just makes me upset because I think it's hypocritical, and those of you who choose not to, that's your choice. But you know what? Y'all know how I feel about it. And I did call and speak with the Governor's Office, I did call and speak with other people, I did ask him for clarification on his order. And I'm just, I, I just can't. And I mean this with, everyone deserves, I was not being disrespectful to you, if you wouldn't have interrupted me. I would have finished by saying, with all due respect, because that's where I was starting, council member, but you rudely interrupted me. Before I could, wait.
No way.
Before I could get that out. And I don't appreciate that, I don't do that.
Well, I don't appreciate, Mayor, you saying, you don't know if you've got it, and you don't know that I took the test today, and I'm negative.
That doesn't matter.
You shouldn't have said that.
It doesn't matter.
When you say something that you don't know.
You don't know.
I know.
I'm stopping.
That's fine.
I'm stopping, but you need to wear your mask. Okay? All right, I'm going to call for a vote, all in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. Five yes, two no. The motion carries. Next item, oh, is that all? All right, I would like to read that at the close of the city council meeting, the council will hold an executive session to discuss and or deliberate economic development negotiations in accordance with section five-five-one point zero eight-seven of the Government Code to wit specifically Suez Water Technology and Solutions sinking incentives for their facility on College Street west of the Beaumont Municipal Airport. Consider matters to deliberate the employment evaluation duties of a public officer or employee in accordance with section five-five-one point zero seven-four of the Government Code to wit specifically. Kyle Hayes, City Manager, Tyrone Cooper, City Attorney, Tina Broussard, City Clerk, Craig Lively, Chief Magistrate. Now would be the time for any citizen who wishes to speak, if you would like to make public comment today, and you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip, hand it to the officer, she will call out your name. We would appreciate if you'd keep your comments to three minutes, the green light will come on. When you approach the podium, the red light will come on when your time is up. Is there anyone who wishes to speak?
Yes, ma'am, Hilda Hiltz, thirty-nine fifty-five Robinson Street, Beaumont, Texas. Chief of the Department.
Okay. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Hiltz.
You had said you was going to get back with me when last time I was here, which was three weeks ago. I haven't heard back from anyone about my house. Just like you so concerned about his mess, this how concerned I am about my house. Your department destroyed my house, they can't live in it, but it's okay for y'all not to want to fix it. I don't understand the issue with it. Drainage did it, own it.
Okay, Ms. Hiltz, I'm not familiar with what you're speaking of, but if, if you want to speak with the city attorney afterwards, I'm assuming you've made a claim.
I made a claim. You all turned it down, why?
I know you've waited for a while, so if you want to wait, we'll try to see what, give us your address.
That what you told me the last time, it'd been three weeks ago.
All right, Ms. Hiltz, thank you. Did you have anything else to say?
Yeah, I want my house fixed so I can go home. You all got me homeless, but you worried about everything but my house, I'm worried about my house.
Yes, ma'am.
That's all I'm going to get, right?
I can't discuss this with you, I'm telling you that we can talk afterwards, I've asked you that, what address is it, please?
Thirty-nine fifty-five Robinson Street.
I didn't hear, Robinson?
Thirty-nine fifty-five Robinson Street.
Okay. Is that, whose, whose ward is that? Okay. Okay, so are you familiar with it, Councilman? Okay. I'll visit with Councilmember Samuel, and we'll get back with you, okay? Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
There's no other citizens who wish to speak?
No, ma'am.
Okay, Councilmember Getz, I'll start with you.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Mayor. We have presently had street hazards throughout our city that are marked by cones. You know, when I was a child growing up, we had smudge pots, and you could visibly see at night that there was a hazard there. We don't do that a lot anymore, we don't have smudge pots at all, but what we do have available is at very low cost, bright blinking red LED lights. And what I would encourage our city manager to do is to look into what it would cost to buying a number of these for our streets department and for our first responders. So that if they come upon a hazard at night, that instead of just putting cones around, which are not really very visible. It might be, it might be sufficient, and might insulate us from liability by having cones out there, but. I think we shouldn't do just the minimum, we should do more. And I would encourage you to look into what it would cost to buy some flashing LED lights that could be put out where we have hazards in the street to alert the mothers of those. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilman, Councilmember Gashell.
Thank you, Mayor. We here in America operate off the Gregorian calendar, but in Israel, of course, the Jewish community looks at the Hebraic calendar. The new year for us is January, the new year for Israel is the month of Teshri, which we're in right now. Rosh Hashanah is their new year, it started Friday, September the eighteenth at sundown. It's a two-day celebration. It ended on Sunday afternoon, the twentieth, at sundown. So to the Jewish community, let me say Happy New Year. Now, I brought all that up for this one reason. I know that we're all tired. We're tired of the COVID nineteen, we're tired of the storms, the economy. We're even tired, we're even tired of the presidential election. We're ready to move forward. And I sense it as I deal with people. People are starting to enter into a hopelessness, they're weary and they're tired. So let me just say that. Rosh Hashanah, the day on the Hebraic calendar, on God's calendar, it moves from sundown to sundown. Ours is from sunrise to sunrise. They begin at sundown. Because in God's economy, He moves people from darkness to light. And so I just want to encourage the citizens to hold on. I know for some of you right now, it seems dark, but just hold on. Joy comes in the morning. And we will get through this COVID nineteen, we will get past the presidential election. We will get past the economics. We will get past the hurricane season, we will get past this. So just hold on, be encouraged. This weekend was Rosh Hashanah, the new year for the Jewish community. So Happy New Year, but I, I find hope in that, that it's a new beginning. It's their new year, fifty-seven eighty-one, ours will be twenty-twenty-one. But I'm kind of holding on to their new year and declaring that's a new beginning for me now, so be encouraged. As I said, God moves you from darkness to light. So hold on, joy comes in the morning. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilman Pay.
Interesting that you say that, Randy. September twenty-second, eighteen sixty-two, Abraham Lincoln issued the Preliminary Emancipation Proclamation. If we think we had it cut today, imagine what our country was going to be. All of that, and he said it was going to take place effective January first, nineteen, eighteen sixty-three. And it did, and a lot of things have changed since then. Sometimes we tend to focus on the negatives, it's positive. For those of you that's been around me a long time, you know, I don't have time to think about negative things. There's enough negative things, I don't need to be worried about it. If Jesus tells me not to worry, I'm not going to worry about it. And. Unless somebody else comes along, who walked on water, healed sick, raised dead, I'm going to focus on Him and what He says about me. There's a lot of really positive things, even in the darkness. As Randy said, clouds do have a silver lining. We've got, I do want to give you an update on the Women's All-Pro Tour that we had here last week in Beaumont. Sponsored by the Babes of Harris Foundation, for those of you who don't know, the disclaimer is, I am president of Babes of Harris Foundation. It's a nonprofit agency that promotes the legacy of Babes of Harris. There's nobody, nobody gets paid to do anything on the Babes of Harris Foundation, we all do this as volunteers. And last week, we brought the Babes of Harris Open back to Beaumont, where it played at the Beaumont Country Club in nineteen fifty-three. Babes of Harris won the first one, I've mentioned that before. Marilyn Smith won the last one in nineteen sixty-seven, both of them were founders of the LPGA. And, and they're Women's Golf Hall of Fame. This year's winner was from Beaumont. Julie Imay, who played college golf at La Mardi University. She actually won her check for seventy-five hundred dollars. When Babe won the tournament, she won eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. I mean, I'm sorry, I just got to laugh. But it's a great thing to come on, response, our community and the people that support it, they're really great. It gives young professional women golfers an opportunity to play that, and to work their way on the LPGA Tour. So for those of you that didn't get a chance to see, oh, by the way, she shot six hundred. So she's a spectacular golfer and a wonderful person. And the last thing that I'd like to mention is, we've made a lot of progress from the standpoint of how our meetings are moving forward with some of the rules that we've adopted. I'd like for us to take a look at adopting Robert's rules. And looking at it a couple of weeks from now, I don't mean next week, but like two weeks from now. Discuss that possibility, because when there is a question of how do we handle some things? If we had some guidelines, then it's not a personal interpretation of what I might think, or what Taylor thinks, or Mike, or Robin. We just follow the rules. And so I'd like for us to consider that.
I'd like for us to consider that, like, two weeks from today instead of next week, just to give everybody a chance to think about it. For those of you didn't hear what I said before, I'm not going to repeat it, hopefully you can read lips at home. But I will repeat the one thing, September twenty-second, eighteen sixty-two, Abraham Lincoln Preliminary Emancipation Proclamation that took effect January the first, eighteen sixty-three. It was a great day for America when that happened. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Samuel.
It was a great day for some people. You know. It bothers me how we can be so flippant about some things. And we discount so many things, I wasn't going to say anything, but. Over forty-five percent of the streets in Ward Three are in disrepair. As I read this packet, Avenue A has reached the end of its useful life. Doucet has reached the ends of its useful life. Fourth Street has reached the end of its useful life. And of those projects, there were three projects in Ward Three projected, nine-point-two million. There were two projects for Ward Four, five-point-three million. Two, one, three projects in Ward One, seven-point-six million dollars. But in Ward Two, that was thirty-three-point-four million dollars. We talk about equity, we talk about equality. And then we, 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 we talk about, and, and the basis, that was one project. And it wasn't because the roadway had reached the end of its useful life, but it's because there's a need for additional traffic flow from north to south in Beaumont. I understand moving forward to do those things that are in the best interest of all of our citizens. I understand that, I understand it's important to look forward and try to foresee where we're going as a city altogether. I understand that. This woman is out of her house. And we flippantly tell her we, we. This woman is out of her house and we flippantly tell her we, we go. The God I serve looks at all people as being equal and he cares about each one.
Councilmember Muton?
Mayor, no comment.
Mayor, I have one thing else. I have to respond to what I just heard. There was a statement made that thirty-three million dollars of projects are in Ward Two. That has to be referencing the extension of Dallin Road because there has not been thirty-three million dollars worth of projects done in Ward Two. That is something that has been on the books for over twenty years. It's not funded. It's not even in the engineering phase at this point. Now, you can contrast that with Concord Road, which I supported, which is in Ward Three, which is not only funded, but has been built and serves the public. So when you get up here and you start trying to talk about inequalities and disparities and things that are and are not being done, you know, I'm looking at twenty million dollars in Concord Road, thirty-three million dollars in Washington Boulevard, projects I supported. But it is time. It is past time for some of this money to be looked at, to be spent in Ward Two, and I won't be silent about it.
Well, Mayor, I, I, I do know that I did miss my whole point.
Turn your mic on. Turn your mic.
My whole point was, we're talking about putting cones around potholes that are bad in a, by a street. But we're gonna get a few to put. There are so many streets in Ward Three that have potholes. Are we gonna put the cones there also? Or we just gonna put them, uh, where you feel like they're, they should go? But I, I, I didn't wanna make it personal, but that was my point. We wanna protect automobiles by putting cones out. But when we call in, there's, there are streets all over this city that have potholes. We don't have enough cones to cover all the potholes in our city, so how are we gonna make the decision? Is it gonna be which councilmember spends the time to go out and find these holes? Are we gonna send a squad out, a, a, a unit out to see where they need to be placed? I don't know. But. Okay, I'm not gonna argue with you, Mr. Getz. I'll let it go.
Councilmember, um, I can't speak for him, but I believe that he was talking about like when we have a natural disaster and a tree is down in the street, um, that, that I don't believe he was.
That's not what I gathered, Mayor.
But, um, cuz I do know about an incident that happened, so I think that's what councilmember Getz was speaking of. I don't think it was potholes. I think it was danger.
Mayor, I, I wasn't talking about potholes. I, I wasn't talking about potholes, uh, but I am talking about excavations where there's like a six-foot drop in the, because something is being worked on, like a water line, and, and that's what I'm talking about. I'm not talking about potholes.
Alright, so now that I've listened to all y'all, are you gonna get up and leave? Okay, thank you, cuz I do have some things to say and they're important and they do, they are in regard to our citizens. But first, let me say, I don't wanna be a part of this. This is just horrible. And councilmember, uh, Page, I apologize to you if I upset you, but I was going to say with all due respect, but I'm gonna tell you how bad it bothers me that three y'all up here refuse to wear masks in their meetings. You don't have to, but it bothers me because I know what the governor's order says. I can't make you do it. And that's all I was trying to say. And I would pose to anyone out here that if you're in a grocery store and you're standing beside someone who doesn't have a mask on, you don't know that they got tested today. I don't think you would. That's all I have to say. With all due respect, I shouldn't have said anything, but I cannot tell you, I'm asking y'all to please abide by the governor's orders and wear your mask and what medical professionals are telling us to do. We're opening up our facilities. I want people to go in those facilities and wear masks. If we don't do it up here, then how can we expect them to do it? My thoughts, my thoughts only, and I have the right to those. And I don't wanna argue and I don't like this and this is not good. And I honestly don't like either, and I will talk to councilmember Neill, this is the second time when I'm talking, that he's walked out of the room. I think if we're gonna respect each other and listen to what everyone else has to say, then you need to do that when I'm making my comments as well. And with the city manager and the city attorney, cuz it's important to all of us. So, um, I am gonna ask y'all if you have anything? Okay, I want to mention that we talked about COVID-nineteen earlier. There are so many testing sites all over the city that are at no charge to our citizens. If you think you need to be tested, please go. They're listed on our websites. Um, they were listed on our Facebook pages. Uh, they do say what insurances they take, but most of them waive your co-pay if you have insurance. And if you don't have insurance, you will be tested because they can charge to the CARE Act. In addition, um, we do have another community COVID testing next week. It was scheduled for this week, but, um, we postponed it due to the inclement weather that we've been look, watching, uh, with Tropical Storm Beta. So now, um, the testing is the twenty-eighth of September through October second, eight AM to four PM. No appointment needed. It's at Crystal Ray Church, uh, seven-sixty-seven Avenue A. That's to anyone that wants to go. However, there are other facilities available to any citizen that wants to be tested. If you don't know what to do or you don't have the internet to look it up, call our office here and Hallie can tell you where they are. And, um, just call the, um, executive office at City Hall and we can tell you where those places are, but they're all around town. I don't wanna mention some of them be- because I'd miss somebody and they are businesses, so I don't wanna do that, but they do not charge. Um, and, but you could call first, see what, what is needed for an appointment and make sure that they're not gonna charge you. And speaking of Tropical Storm Beta, um, we, I'm hoping that we've, um, dodged a bullet, um, and all the prayers of all of our pastors that I hear from almost every morning um, have, um, have granted us a break. Um, Tropical Storm Beta has weakened, but it is expected to be a tropical de- uh, depression as it travels east along the Texas coast. It still, however, poses a threat to the Beaumont area as rain bands form. Uh, this is as of noon today. Uh, we could see as much as ten inches of rain if a heavy rain band forms over Beaumont. The Emergency Operations Center continues to monitor the storm as we all should. Um, we did distribute six-hundred sandbags yesterday in addition to the eighty-four-hundred that were distributed in preparation of Laura just a few weeks ago. So, um, that's what's happening there. Please, um, if you do Facebook, follow the, um, City of Beaumont, Texas Emergency Management Site. And we keep that updated constantly along with the other Facebook pages, but that one specifically deals with any type of natural disasters or emergencies that we have. Um, on another light recording, um, uh, Beta, um, very, this is, uh, I'm very proud to announce that our Animal Care and Humane Society of Southeast Texas partnered today and, um, because of the inclement weather that we thought were incoming, the, sometimes it's very difficult for animals, as you might know, to survive if we have a high-water incident. And, um, the Humane Society, along with our animal shelter here in Beaumont, um, did a transport that allows both shelters to be prepared for any potential flooding associated with Beta as well as opening up valuable space for any post-storm animal intakes. Rescue organization Wings of Rescue has a char- charge of flying about a hundred dogs this morning, dogs and cats, to part, to our partner shelter, the Humane Society of North Texas in Fort Worth area, where the animals will undergo health evaluations and hopefully find their new forever homes. So I thought that was a, a big, um, a very positive, um, deal for our animal shelter and for the Humane Society of Southeast Texas. And I thank everyone that supports those organizations because I will say that after Harvey, I had the opportunity to fly on a helicopter um, and, uh, look at the damage and, um, the, the, um, the devastation was horrible. And we do go to rescue people and we try to rescue animals, but people are our top priority, obviously, and always will be. But something like this really does help with the animals as well, so, uh, my hat goes off to these people that are doing this. If you've not, uh, Lemonade Day is a, a, an initiative that started with the Beaumont Chamber of Commerce and now has many different companies that are involved, but this is for our young people. I'm announcing it because it was scheduled, um, for tomorrow and it's now been rescheduled to the twenty-ninth. Um, Lemonade Day is, um, uh, for children who want to be an entrepreneur. It teaches kids how to own and operate a business by running a lemonade stand. Um, but it's free to the kids. They get all the supplies. So now it's rescheduled due to weather, September twenty-ninth, um, at the Beaumont Children's Museum to drive-through. It's a drive-through, like we do a lot of things these days. Um, so, uh, please, if you have a child, you can look this up on the Chamber's website, on our city website, um, and just, or just Google Lemonade Day Beaumont, Texas and it'll pop up. So, um, I wanted to give you that bit of good news. We are still doing everything we can to continue life as normal as possible by, um, doing things like this. And, um, I encourage everyone to participate in those because as, uh, councilmember Felschau said, um, our nerves are frazzled and, um, it's taken a toll on a lot of people. And, um, the only way that we can get through this is together and by respecting each other and, um, making sure that we do everything we can, not only to keep ourselves safe, but to keep the people around us safe. That's all of our responsibility. And with that, uh, thank y'all so much for coming, um, mostly staff that's here now. Uh, but, uh, we will now recess into executive session.